Before I forget it. I call to order the January 22, 2018 Regular Business Meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'll remind those in attendance, if they wish to speak during a public hearing or citizen's comment, there are sign-up sheets in the back of the room. Item two is the first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda, is our motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item three, does anybody on City Council have anything they wish to present tonight? No one? All right. Ms. Randall, not here yet. Item four is a proclamation of fair, to proclaim February is Black History Month in the city of Waynesboro, and we were going to make a presentation, but she's not here, is she?
She is not here at the moment.
All right, you want to go ahead and read the proclamation?
Sure. Yes, sir. Whereas Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson, distinguished African-American author, editor, scholar, and historian, is known as the father of black history, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, now the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, in September 1915, and Negro History Week in 1926, which became Black History Month in 1976. And whereas Dr. Woodson proclaimed that Black History Month should always occur in the second week of February, between the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, and whereas the theme of this year's celebration is African-Americans in Times of War, honoring those brave men and women who served their countries in the armed forces, like the legendary Tuskegee Airmen, who were highly decorated for their service in World War II, especially those who made the ultimate sacrifice while defending the American ideals of freedom and democracy. And whereas the history of the United States is rich with inspirational stories of great men and noble women, whose actions, words, and achievements have united Americans and contributed to the success and prosperity of the United States, be it resolved by the mayor of Waynesboro, Virginia, on behalf of the City Council, our local government takes great pleasure in recognizing February 2018 as Black History Month, and urges all citizens to join in celebrating the accomplishments of African-Americans during Black History Month, and encourages the people of Waynesboro to recognize the many talents, achievements, and contributions that African-Americans have made to their communities, and be it further resolved that the clerk of council transmit copies of this resolution to the curator of the African-American History Museum, Waynesboro, Virginia, for appropriate distribution. In witness hereof, I have set here unto my hand and caused the seal of the city of Waynesboro to be affixed this 22nd day of January 2018, Bruce E. Allen, Mayor, City of Waynesboro, Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. I would ask the members of City Council to join me in proclaiming February is Black History Month in Waynesboro. Please say aye.
Aye.
It's all five of us, thank you.
Thank you.
Item five a is upon application by Tom Schumate, Surveyor, Inc., and representing Dr. Kenneth Bowman, to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance to close and vacate all streets and alleys in Basic City south of the unimproved section of Seventh Street South, with the exception of the unnamed 50-foot right-of-way. Mr. Judee?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The property that we're talking about today is located on the eastern side of the city, behind the old landfill, what's going to be Sunset Park, as you can see here, on the border with Augusta County, as you're heading up, just north of East Main. It's part of the 1890 Basic City plat. It was all platted out back in the day when they would lay out the streets and alleys and lots, you know, in a grid, kind of without respect to topography and not necessarily keeping up with whether any of the improvements were made. Since that time, in the last, you know, 130 years or so, it's not been improved at all, so this back section of the plat was never constructed. Mr. Bowman owns all these lots, back in the corner here, and down here at the bottom is Corey Fox's property. Mr. Bowman would like to, or Dr. Bowman would like to sell a good deal of this property to Mr. Fox, but first, they would like to vacate the alleys and return the area to being just a large tract of land, rather than the platted streets and alleys. As I said, it's laid out in a grid, it doesn't, it's very hilly terrain back there. Under the current subdivision ordinance and the current street standards, you couldn't really improve the streets or build a lot of the infrastructure that you would need in this area, you would have to replat it, and that's what was done by, up in this area around Kirby Avenue, his name has escaped me at the moment, but when that little subdivision or that little area was developed, they came in and reoriented the streets and the alleys to match the topography a little bit better and to make it buildable. As I said, this is the area that they're requesting to be vacated. We've asked to keep open this right-of-way that runs along the backside of Sunset Park, just to keep our options open as far as the park go. May Avenue currently has a gate across it up here, and the only house that's on it is Mr. Fox's house. Once the area is vacated, the streets and alleys, it'll be sold to him. Some considerations from the city side, this is 1.66 acres of right-of-way, so it's a large area. Sometimes when there's a very small amount of right-of-way, if its value is less than $1,000, we might just give it to them for free. In this case, it's a significant area of land, so we've assessed the applicant a fee that they'll be paying, the city of $6,539. If council wishes to reduce that, they are permitted to do so, they're permitted to, this is the amount that the applicant has agreed to so far, so we wouldn't be able to raise that without, you know, negotiating with them further, but this is the assessed value, minus $100 for a tax correction that we made. Part of the, as I said, it's part of the original 1890 Basic Plat. We felt, on staff, that it was an okay thing to do because, as it is, you would need to replat it anyway in order to conform to modern infrastructure standards, and it's almost a little bit of a liability at the moment, not a great one, but if we got into what somebody could or couldn't do on one of those lots, if they just owned one of them up off of, you know, outside of our street grid. The recipient does not plan to develop the area, however, they would just like it to stay a large wooded lot. The one issue that has come up, both from a reader and from our parks director as well, is access to Sunset Park and ensuring that we don't miss out on something there. The opinion that we've gotten from Public Works Department and from my staff is that this does not significantly affect the plans for Sunset Park at all. The reasoning being that if you were to put a second access up to the top to where the park area is located, it would make more sense to come off of Jackson Avenue, which would be located up here, because that's where the grid is at its highest point, so you'd have the least rise to get up to the park. If you were to come at it from down here, you would have to snake around quite a bit to get up to the top, and it'd be a more difficult construction. Also, it could potentially be an access for maybe the lower area of the park, if we wanted to do something down in the bottom land back here that would require some type of access, but as it stands, our plans are for hiking trails in this area, and there is a service road that comes down from the top down the back, so it certainly reduces, it could theoretically reduce some of our options, you would have to cut around, you know, around here, but staff felt that it didn't greatly affect the plans as they stand. We think we can get to it just fine. The one final consideration or issue that we have is that, kind of the agreement with staff and the surveyors, that we would like to vacate all of these internal lot lines and turn this just into a large parcel and correct some of these lot lines, so that in the end, it all makes sense as a big tract of land. What we don't want to do is vacate streets and alleys and end up with a bunch of landlocked little parcels in here. Applicant is intending to do that, unfortunately, you know, they're not going to do it, and if we're not going to vacate the right-of-way, and so we need to, potentially, I propose that we pass the ordinance, but add an addendum conditioning it on the dissolving of those lot lines into one big lot. This is the plat, this is kind of, you know, the applicant's already made clear that that's their intention to do that, to dissolve into one lot. Any questions I can answer? We also have the applicant here to answer any questions.
Any questions of anybody?
What would the zoning of the parcels?
The zoning of the parcels is RG5, so it would stay that way. If they wanted to develop it in the future, after going through this process and having just one big lot, if they ever wanted to develop it again in the future, they'd have to go through our subdivision process, and so then we would get to have another conversation with them about where the streets and alleys should be in that case.
I don't think I look, see Mr. Fox wanting to develop it after he gets where it's not going to be.
Not the signal I've gotten, yeah.
Right, okay. All right, nothing else?
What, just had a question. Would the ordinance then be, not take effect until all the lot lines have been vacated?
Yes, which is an administrative thing, I can do that, I just want to make sure that those two things were connected, so that something didn't happen.
Anything else? All right, I'll hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak, Mr. Mayor, but our practice is to afford the applicant the opportunity to speak if they want to add anything to Mr. Judee's presentation. Very good.
All right, then I'll hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I would introduce with the considerations, right?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All ordinance is introduced this evening will be considered again at the February 12 meeting of City Council. Item 5b is at the request of the city manager to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance to authorize the city manager to sell .037 acres of city-owned land located in Ridgeview Park, tax map number 53-2-D, to Sheila Merritt, 601 Metevue Cove, tax map Mr. Judee?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a property that's located on, in Club Court, adjacent to the southern part of Ridgeview Park, it's owned by Herbert and Sheila Merritt. What happened here was that, you know, this type of thing happens, you don't know exactly where your property line is, the bushes are here, you know, the fence line is there, and they ended up constructing a pool that slightly encroached on the city property out here in Ridgeview Park, and didn't realize that until they attempted to sell the property recently. What we've done is a lot-line adjustment here, which is normally just an easy administrative thing, however, because we are the owners over here in the park, this results in a transfer of about, you know, a, I guess that's a thirtieth of an acre of land to them, and so that requires a public hearing, and so that's why we're here today. They will be paying the city, the assessed value of the land, I think it's $925, it's fairly trivial, but you just felt that it was not a good policy in general to give people land because of encroachments, so basically, we're going to sell that sliver land to them and correct it.
This is the same thing we discussed once before.
I think we did discuss it at some point before, yeah, but we actually have the stuff ready now.
Right, all right. Any questions of the staff report?
Not helpful.
All right, I'll hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak. Is the applicant present? I don't think, or their agent? Okay.
I'll hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Item 5c is to receive a presentation of the planning commission's annual report for 2017. Mr. Judee?
Of the planning commission's six official responsibilities, the last one is to submit an annual report to the city council of its activities. I'm here today as the clerk of the planning commission to do so. You've seen most of the work that has come out of the planning commission so far this year, because generally, it has to come to you afterwards, but I'll just summarize it for you. The first is our normal development review stuff, we've had several rezonings this year, there was the Sherwood Avenue, which was just done for financing purposes, the Metalcrafters rezoning, which we did for the sake of the brewery, and we added, that was when we added microbreweries to the ordinance, and then the Waynesboro Place PUD amendment, which allowed for the expansion of Windy Grove Apartments. We had the Cell Tower, we had the East Main Auto Service and Sale, and then we had a couple of big preliminary plats this year, Claybrook and Evershire, and both of those involved quite a bit of work from staff and the developers. That was the development review situation. We had several ordinance updates as well, that were our big projects this year, besides the comp plan. First one being the subdivision ordinance update, which planning commission spent a lot of time on, workshopping, you all got to see several times, it was recently adopted. We will probably have to come back to you with a few tweaks to that soon. We also did a small package of zoning ordinance text amendments based on issues that had come up during application of the zoning ordinance. We'll probably be coming to you with more of those next year. And then other things that went on this year, other kind of side projects that went on for the planning commission this year, we had the VDOT Transportation Alternatives Grant Application for East Main Street Skate. We had some other grant applications, obviously mostly done by staff, but we kept the planning commission involved in all this. South River Greenway Extension in North Park, that's just banking some money for whenever the easement issue is resolved. Road entrance to Sunset Park, we've applied for recreational access grant for that money, and then some sidewalk projects around Windy Grove Drive and Lucy Lane that you've heard about recently for revenue sharing. But the big project, as you're well aware, of the planning commission this year was the comprehensive plan update. Many of you came to the first steering committee meeting, or some steering committee meeting, or some meeting after that. Our consultants presented their findings to council, I believe back in August, their initial findings, and then we, since then, have been working on drafts of the plan. This was a great capacity building exercise, I think, for the community and for the planning commission, in terms of just increasing the number of people in the community that had a deeper understanding of how the city works and what the issues are that we're facing. We appointed three new planning commissioners this year, and all of them were on the steering committee and applied because of their work on the steering committee, so I think that experience served us really well, and we've now got, I think, a great set of planning commissioners who are very engaged and very knowledgeable as a result of that. We got the first drafts of the document, went over some revisions with it, looked at trying to move it forward. The planning commission in general is very happy with the structure of the document, with the thrust of it, weren't as happy with the level of finish, and so we just delayed it a little longer to continue revising. The planning commission, I think this is not a common or not an easy thing for a, you know, a public body composed of working people who are largely volunteering, but conducted two work sessions in December that went to several hours, three hours or so each, going line by line through the document, and I think that was extremely helpful. It helped us to clean up a lot of language and make sure that the document looks clean and will read like a public document ought to. That said, it is a very different comp plan, I think it's very readable and very accessible in a way that a lot of cities' comp plans are not. So hopefully, we'll be bringing that to you for a public hearing and for passage by city council very soon, and I know I've kept you all informed and sent you all copies of the draft, and I know several of you have talked to me about the drafts, and so hopefully that nothing in it will be a surprise to you by that time. So that brings us to next year, after, once the, I told Jim after, I'd been here a few months, that I wasn't exactly sure what I was going to be doing once the comp plan was done, because it was what I did all the time, but there will be plenty of stuff to do next year. First thing is just to pass the comp plan, obviously, and then once that's done, some priorities of my department and the planning commission are to work on a sidewalk plan. One of the priorities that we hear a lot is that we'd like to increase work on sidewalks, and so it'll be up to you all to decide that from a funding perspective, and if funding does become available, we hope to assess how we can more strategically use whatever funding we have to, where that sidewalk work should be focused. And a lot of work was actually done on this by my predecessor, Mr. Michael Barnes, but that plan was never completed and passed, so we'll be picking up where he left off and working on that. Mr. Barnes also worked a lot on entrance corridor design guidelines, and I think he was a fantastic designer, possibly a little bit of a perfectionist, just was never happy with this document, so we get to dig it out and say, well, this was really good, and just pass it. So that's another goal for this year, is to go over that document and pass it. Hope to be spending some time, I don't know if this will take the form of a formal study, but an issue that came up in the comp plan was the long-term viability of retail at Exit 94, and what we do with all the apartment demand we're experiencing out there, what that area looks like in the future. Hope to commit at least some of our staff time to studying that area and coming up with better answers for you all. It's one of those problems that looks bland at first, and then the more you dig, the more there are just layers and layers and layers to it, so hope to get to a point where I have clearer opinions for you if asked what to do with that. This is something I'm excited about as well, we have the last semester, planning grad students at UVA do a practicum project at a nearby community, we have a group of them that'll be doing a small, just study on the, didn't know exactly what to call it, I called it the midtown area, but west of downtown, the kind of large commercial area that I think is a critical area, it brings together our, kind of, all three of our major walkable historic neighborhoods, and the Tree Streets, and Wayne Hills, and over to Charleston Park, and it forms this, definitely the core of the city, but it's a lot of underutilized real estate, and I think it has a lot of potential, and we're not sure if it's downtown, or if it's not downtown, if it's, you know, just neighborhood stuff, and so this will be some free labor for us, a good project, I think, for them to learn a lot, maybe we'll get some ideas out of it, I'll have them present to the planning commission, and maybe if it's really good, we'll bring it to you, I don't know. And then we will have to do some new zoning ordinance text amendments, we'll be bringing that to the planning commission soon, again, just issues that have come up through day-to-day plan review, things that don't really work, things that need to be changed, and then we'll also have a few fixes to the subdivision ordinance, some things weren't quite in line with the code, and that we'll have to patch up from our last round of amendments. So that is, those are the main priorities that we have listed for next year. If there are more things that the council would like the planning commission to be focused on or spending its time on, then certainly open that direction, I can pass it on to them. We have Elzina, so obviously our council liaison on planning commission as well. Look forward to hearing from you.
I do have one item that I think would, I've had a lot of interest in for a while now, is the Tree Street Historic District. It wouldn't take anyone very long to realize that when you open it up, when it was initially established, there's some odd parcels that were left out of it. In fact, some of the most grand homes in the entire Tree Street neighborhood district were excluded. I'd like to revisit that and maybe do an update and a sort of reassessment of the value of additions or deletions from that district. I think there'd be value in doing that.
Great, okay. I know Mr. Shaw was involved with the historic district establishment in the city, so hopefully I can work off of his knowledge on that, we can try to get some answers there.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Item 6a is to consider the request by destination downtown Waynesboro to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol in association with the South River Fly Fishing Expo from Wednesday, April 18, 2018, to Sunday, April 22, 2018. Mr. Hamp?
So Mayor Allen and members of council, this event will actually occur exclusively on park property and does not require any road closures, so for council's consideration this evening is simply to authorize the request of the event organizers' desire to sell and have consumed beverage alcohol on public property in association with the event.
Didn't we do that last year?
I think we did, yes, sir.
No problems from?
That I'm aware of, and I think we would hear about them if we did.
Chief Specker nodding no, so make sure there's no problems. All right, is there a motion to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol and city-owned property in association with the Fly Fishing Expo? Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item 6b is to consider approving an application for Mr. Joe Kaminsky, Blue Ridge Soapbox Classic Derby President, to close a portion of Main Street and adjacent streets, place necessary barricading, and for amplified sound on Saturday, May 5, 2018, from 5:30 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of holding the annual Blue Ridge Soapbox Derby. Mr. Hamp?
So one item I would note, and this is a beneficial development, and that is, with the completion of the Main Street Bridge Project this year, there's Race Avenue is open, so it will afford more convenient access to the south, southern portion, or areas of the community south of Main Street. Last year, because of that bridge project, if you were trying to access Kroger's, for example, from the east, it was a little bit more challenging, a little more out-of-the-way route. With that project complete, the road closure will occur at Race, Race will be open, and it'll be more convenient travel around the venue. Other than that, it's the same deal as last year.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to authorize the requested road closures and conduct the 2018 Soapbox Derby on Main Street? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item 7a is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a total of $1,281,018 of general fund, unassigned fund balance for transfers to various committee reserves. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city council has adopted a fund balance policy that dictates that when the city's fund, unassigned fund balance exceeds- that dictates that when the city's fund, unassigned fund balance exceeds 110% of two months' worth of operating expenditures, the city staff will consider introducing an ordinance to the council to reallocate the amounts above that guideline. So as the mayor stated, this year's fiscal year 2017 unassigned fund balance exceeded the guideline by $1,281,018. So the ordinance before you tonight is our suggestion to the council as how those funds may be reallocated. Just as a, a general review and primer for anyone listening, that governments operate in a unique accounting system that's known as fund accounting, and we've had this conversation before, where the city's funds are actually segregated, and that segregation is meant to dictate the level of authority that's required to spend those, those funds. So at the, the top are funds that are considered unspendable, and they're considered unspendable because either they're not in a spendable form, like inventory, or they've been restricted, like the cemetery's perpetual care fund, where when we sold lots to folks at the cemetery, there was a stipulation that we would maintain a perpetual care fund and only spend the interest earned on that fund. Next down are restricted funds that are restricted by the provider. These are typically grants or funding that we receive from state and federal agencies. VDOT transportation money, for instance, are restricted to uses according to VDOT. Next down, and funds that start to become of, of greatest concern to council decision-making, are committed funds, and these are funds that are constrained by the council itself, that they're not available for expenditure unless the council reappropriates committed funds. Assigned funds are the funds that council has appropriated through the budget process or through appropriations throughout the year, and assigned funds are then the responsibility of the city manager to, to supervise and, and their expenditure. And then finally are these unassigned funds, and these are the funds that have not been designated in some other way. And the fund balance policy that we use looks at those unassigned funds as of the end of the fiscal year, so on June 30th of 2017 in this case. Our suggestion to the council then would be that this year, one, that we would appropriate $125,000 to the ongoing effort to replace the city's enterprise resource planning software. And as you are well aware, we've been engaged in a project for more than a year now to replace the city's central computer systems, and this is the computer system that manages all of our financial and accounting records. It does tax billing, utility, water billing, general billing, also does payroll and human resources for the, the city, as well as certain community development functions. We've suggested that $125,000 be appropriated to that project, and these funds would be available for expenditure at their appropriation. Those are primarily for different types of services that are necessary when we're taking on new computer systems. One would be the initial maintenance of the computer system itself. In other words, the, the software vendor is obliged to resolve problems that we have with the system, or to update our system as they have updates. And we generally load updates on a weekly basis to, to the system. And/or for certain types of other services that maintain the software and hardware interface on our servers and maintain certain things that have to do with database management. Secondly would be purchase services that are related to the replacement of the computer system and the finance department. One would be additional funding for fiscal year 18 audit services that I think, as Mr. Diddick noted during his presentation in December, that this year's audit was particularly complicated because we're operating in two computer systems throughout the year, and we continue to operate in two computer systems. So you're receiving money in one computer system, and, and you're paying money out of a different computer system. And so reconciling our bank account is, has gotten to be much more complex, and will be until we complete the project. So we've also suggested that there would be, we would be able to procure some temporary accounting assistance for the finance department. The total of those services would be $40,000. The remainder of the funds would be in committed reserves. Again, these are the, the reserves that can only be utilized by appropriation of the council. First would be $50,000 to help replenish the governmental technology reserve. This is a reserve that's used primarily by the IT department, Mr. Choate and his group, for the maintenance of large capital expenses related to network servers and other network hardware. We would suggest $265,705 to the governmental equipment replacement reserve. This is a reserve that's utilized to replace equipment, vehicles, lawn mowers, those kinds of things that, in recent years, our practice has been to try to get that reserve to $500,000 as we enter into the budget process. As you're well aware, each year, we utilize some portion of fund balance in, as part of the budget process when we're buying capital or paying for things that are non-recurrent or non-operational expenditures. Much like the equipment replacement reserve, we're suggesting to bring the governmental facility maintenance reserve back up to $500,000. That would require $399,363 appropriation. These are funds that are used to maintain city-owned properties and buildings, replacement of heating and air conditioning units, other types of renovations, repairs to roofs, and those kinds of things. We're suggesting that we replenish the city's economic development reserve. The, the city had an economic development reserve that was liquidated in order to fund the comprehensive plan. We would suggest that the $30,000 be returned to this reserve. These funds have traditionally been used for small grant matches, website development, and small incentives that are granted through the economic development department, and as a supplement, for instance, to the city's facade grant program. That I'm aware that, based on the facade grant applications that we've received during the current fiscal year, we will likely run out of money, and we think that there are perhaps other applicants waiting in the wings if, if the funds were available. And finally, we would suggest that there be an appropriation to the undesignated capital projects fund of the city, that this appropriation would be $370,950. As the council's well aware, you've discussed a, a number of exciting projects for the city, everything from the, the development of Sunset Park, to the support of a satellite facility of the Virginia Museum of Natural History. The city councils made grant applications through various VDOT programs, matches of which would total about $620,000. And our suggestion is that we start to build this capital projects fund to allow that the, the city council can then prioritize the use of those funds. I think as a broad statement, it's, it's important to stress for anyone listening that the use of these funds is a tool that cities use basically to manage money in a thoughtful way, to think about those expenditures that may unfold over a period of years, or to prepare for large expenditures, expenditures which, you know, stabilize your annual budget process. In other words, those kinds of expenditures where it would be difficult to raise sufficient monies in a single fiscal year to cover. And so that you're, you're trying to build essentially a bank account to stabilize the budget, or to address unforeseen emergencies that, the roof damage that can, occurred or in a storm, or other types of, of issues that arise that were unforeseen in the regular budget process. I'm happy to answer any questions the council has. We've prepared an ordinance for your consideration, as I've just described.
Any questions, Mr. Shaw?
I've got a few. So I'd, I'd start off with, I, I appreciate the, the presentation and, and narrative, and I think that this, this, now that we've sort of got the, as Mr. Judea sort of covered in, in his presentation on the comprehensive plan, for council's consideration of aspirations and goals and prioritizations and values, and then, how do we convert and prioritize fund balance revenue, which is essentially surplus revenue. At the end, at the end of the year, it was money that was not previously appropriated or acknowledged, anticipated, I should say, anticipated in that fiscal year, budget year. And so, we essentially ended the year, June 30th, with 1.2, 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. So that 1.3 million dollars then goes to backfill fund categories, savings buckets, that we hadn't previously allocated any resources to. And while I, I could say, you know, in practice, that might sound, sound okay, my concern is that it provides, it's sort of like what I was talking about before when we had our, our, our workshop, that as we move into the budget season and talk about re, potentially reimagining, at least from my words, of reimagining the, the, where our general fund revenue comes from, of pivoting from, you know, where 40% of the general fund revenue comes from real estate revenue, and the average city in Virginia is 62%, is, you know, when you see that police officer on the street, as a real estate owner, I'm only paying, I'm paying less than 50% of my real estate revenue goes to support his or her salary, or the teacher at the grocery store, or the firefighter at church. And so, what I mean all by this is that, a question I'd have for staff, first off, is what would have happened after we did the 110%? What would have happened if the 1.2 million dollars didn't exist? And then, second, how would staff had replenished those savings?
The, to the first question, that if there were no surplus, as you, as you've termed it, there simply would be no ability to reallocate. And so, over a period of time, you could replenish, basically deplete your fund balance, and then, any large expenditure could create a budget crisis, you know, depending on its size. Or you put yourself in a position where any of the type capital projects or capital expenditures would require the city to borrow money. Now, in some localities, there's, there are policies included in the fund balance policy that say that if these funds fall below a certain established threshold, then it's up to the finance director to come up with a plan for replenishment. And practically, what that means is that there's a line item in the budget to replenish fund balance, so that you, as you would consider your annual budget, there may be, you know, a line item of hundreds of thousands of dollars that's, that's essentially to replenish fund balance. If the fund balance, unassigned fund balance falls below the 110%, then your fund balance policy, as it exists, says that you would pull money out of your committed reserves to bring that operating capital back up to, to that minimum threshold.
And so, while I, I appreciate that this is probably how we've, we've done it as a city for, for a long time, I, I would, I guess, go back to the, the thought of, we don't have a, a finance committee on council, and, and the thought of, of having more of a refine for those that want to get, you know, to bleed through the CAFR and, and have those conversations, that I think it would be worthwhile to, for council to establish that committee so that we can talk about those committed reserves. And specifically, I think one of the words that I, that I heard you say was, was, you know, essentially the level of authority by which each of these reserves disperses funds. So a governmental technology reserve of 50,000, a governmental equipment replacement program of maintaining a half a million dollars. This council has not participated in saying if that's a, an adequate amount or an inadequate amount. And so, I'm not saying that, that it's either or, it's just that, again, that we, we haven't had those conversations. So I would offer that, to introduce the ordinance as presented tonight, but would very much appreciate some offline conversation about what, kind of where we go from here, particularly in the next budget year, because, you know, we're, we're, if you, we're budgeting off of, off of an expectation, I hope, that we'll have a good year and have a surplus, that we can go and backfill our savings, which I think creates sort of a, a false expectation on, on the part of citizens as to what it means to, to help finance a community that, that you want to grow and thrive, and, and so on. So I would, I would offer, offer that.
When we, when we put this money in these reserves, and it can go into the government maintenance building, you don't spend that money until you come, and we appropriate to spending, correct?
That's correct.
So, so it's not like we're putting it there, and they, they will sneak it out here and spend it there, and next thing you know, we look and they go, "Oh, that fund's spent." It's always has to come back to us.
That's correct.
And so, you know, when you talk about the finance committee, and it's, it's, in my thought process, it's, it's good to sit here and try to have money back for, for emergencies, or for things that we know that we're going to be dealing with. But the second part of it is, we got to put the money somewhere. So whether we put it in the, the clown fund, or we put it in a maintenance fund, it, it's going somewhere.
Right.
But it gives us an idea of where it's going to be sitting at, and potentially what we're going to use it for, is the way I see it. If it's not used, and it's not spent, then we have it left over and we put it into another reserve. And I think we've had conversations over the years of, where all the money's going to different reserves and whatnot. But I still feel comfortable regardless of how we do it, and, and I'm not opposed to any other conversations or, or different ways of doing it. It still has to come back to us to get spent. So we're aware of where it's going and how it's being used. And if we propose it to go into a building maintenance fund, and then we see it's not enough, we can always change another fund balance that we have and bring it over, and if it's too much, we can always change it back. So...
But if it's not enough, if it's not enough, that's the prob, that's, that's where we're getting to prioritization.
We don't know, we don't know what we're going to be faced in this coming year, because we could have a roof that hadn't been leaking, and all of a sudden, you know, here, we get a call, "We got a big bad leak," or we get a call, "The, the, something's in," where the warranty just run out. Two weeks later, well, we need $100,000 or $900,000 to replace a, something in that program. So, I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying, I reckon in a sense, but I don't want people to think that we're not on top of where the money's going, or how it's being spent. It's, uh, whether it's, at the Allen House, whether it's going into the car fund, or the house fund, or playtime fund, it's all there.
Well, yeah, and I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is that if, if we were to go and advance, move forward with the Sunset Park project as a, as a, for instance, so a $2 million investment, if we, if, 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 and it's not really, it's really about looking forward and moving, moving as we talk about the upcoming budget year. And to have that conversation of not relying on unplanned and surplus funds at the end of the year to reconcile our savings, savings accounts. Because when we do that, it provides very little opportunity for anyone on council to say, "Let's go do that Sunset Park project. Let's go do this," and cash. Like, using, imagine a circumstance where at the end of the fiscal year, and we get our CAFR, and that three-month period after June 30th, and we get our CAFR, and it says, "Waynesboro had a great year. We got a million and a half dollars in unplanned surplus funds." That we said, "Great, we can pay cash money for this project, and we've already reconciled through our normal budget process, we made sure that our equipment reserve fund was a half a million dollars." And we did that by setting the tax rate to generate enough revenue to... And we did that by setting the tax rate to generate enough revenue to, to, to account for that in the budget. Rather than relying on surplus funds to do something that we should have done in the budget.
So if you raised the taxes and we have more revenue come in and then we still have extra money left over, then the peoples will be saying, well, there you are, you're building up the reserves, you got money left, why did you tax us so high?
Well, you could-
And is that to say, so we can plan on what we're going to do this year?
But then you run a year where you have zero surplus and zero unplanned, unexpected revenue. So then, so, and then if we, if we've been relying on the hope that we were going to receive surplus funds at the end of, of fiscal year, how could, how are we, how are we supposed to, to make sure that our reserve balances?
Same.
And that's why I think it's-
It could work the same way. We, we say, well, we're going to raise your taxes and then, oh, we didn't have to spend that money. Then they'll say, well, why'd you raise our taxes?
Right.
Well, because we want to have a fund over here so we can guarantee that we're going to do this project.
Right.
Well, I mean, that, that kind of just comes down to where I say, well, if we're going to do the, the Sunset Park and we're going to put the road in there or any project we're going to do, we need this amount of money to do it, whether it's raises or anything.
Right.
This is the amount the tax has to go to. I mean, it's kind of stirring it to, it's a tax increase.
Well, it's, I appreciate all this discussion with the mayor and the vice mayor, but it seems to me we're kind of getting off the subject and ahead of ourselves. I mean, this ordinance that's proposed now is to deal with how to allocate the, for lack of other term, surplus money we had at the end of 17. And I assume the staff is not infallible, they can't read the future or anything else any better than the rest of us can. But based on their experience and history, whatever is a guideline, they're suggesting that we allocate these funds as in the amounts that they've specified. I think, you know, getting on to the subject of further surpluses down the road or what we do, that's something better left, you know, for another day.
But I guess that's why I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I would look forward to that opportunity to talk another day about it. Because I, I don't, we, we can't let this roll into our first budget or second budget work session and start, and then just start talking about it.
Well, it is-
Because one avenue that I thought of was to go as staff, staff recommended. The second was to exclude all the committed reserve allocations, which don't have a known expense coming up, and assign that all to uncommitted reserves, undesignated reserves. And the reason for that is, so that way when we get together as a group and as part of the budget process, we can either say, well, Mr. Hamp, find a tax rate that gets us to replenish these savings, these, these reserves into the next budget year, and then have a conversation about what opportunities might exist with the uncommitted reserves that we've set aside. There's, there's, there's multiple ways to do it. That's why I thought the easiest one would be just do it as they've, as they've offered it. But again, I think it's, we're not going to get out of this, out of this thing of how we find fiscal capacity to make investments to, to create, to, to ensure that our, our city is competitive without that conversation, so.
I personally think it's a healthy conversation to have. And certainly if you look around, there are communities that have more elaborate, more sophisticated ways of managing fund balance. And a part of that sort of next step is saying, well, what levels of, of funds should be in each of these reserves? Some communities have simpler ways of managing the reserves in that there are fewer reserves and they have a more broad category. Some are, are more detailed and, but I think it's up to the council to decide, you know, what threshold should be there, what's being held. Because you foresee that there are these large looming expenditures and you say, just like your family would, let's start putting some money aside to replace the refrigerator when it goes. Versus, you know, planning for things, the unforeseen, so to speak. Both good points that the mayor makes is that these funds are only spent, these committed reserves, at the behest of council. And that part of the reason you are provided an audit, maybe the most important reason, is that your books are accurately stated. So when staff comes to you and says, you have this much money in a reserve, there is integrity in that statement and an outside auditor has tested it. I do think the, that we have been at times the beneficiary of a couple of windfalls and, and Mayor Allen, you and I recall the DuPont settlement that really enabled us to start this system, that it gave us more than $2 million seed money from back taxes that, that were paid. And we set up, started to be able to set up this system. And then we've been also the beneficiary of, you know, the prudent negotiation we made on the Middle River Regional Jail that, you know, when Rockingham-Harrisonburg bought into the jail, that provides us some funds. I think, again, to, to the mayor's point, that with, when we considered the last tax rate increase related to the high school renovation project, we established a reserve. So we said that, that that five cents that, you know, was five of the six cents of that tax rate increase was going to be set aside in a reserve to be dedicated to a specific project, to a known project. And I'm, it, it's not my place to, you know, speak on behalf of the citizenry, but at least the citizenry that showed up here in public meetings, for the most part, said, that's acceptable to us. We understand what the project is and why we're paying additional taxes for it. And it made sense then to segregate those funds in a reserve so that they didn't get lost in other city funds and be spent for some other purpose.
Well, and I know too, we've, we've been fortunate to have good staff that kind of keeps us headed in the right direction because, you know, we talked about the computer system needing to be replaced for how many years before we found-
Yeah, several, it was three or four years.
You know, we, we've talked about the heating system over at Gorsuch Building. I think I saw trucks over there last weekend when it was cold and they're replacing and, you know, y'all do a good job of keeping us aware of, these are the things to come, just like, you know, we've been talking about our ladder truck and different things. It's always something, just like at my house. But anyway, yeah, it's a good conversation and I look forward to having more about it. Thank you.
Anything else in reference to this?
I would have a question, just to clarify. Did Mr. Short introduce the ordinance and then request some additional conversation or did he express an idea that the ordinance could be introduced and then?
To, to introduce the ordinance as presented and then ask that over the next couple of weeks prior to taking action on it, that we have a conversation about it.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll put you down as introducing. Item 7B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the facility maintenance reserve in the amount of $65,754 for transfer to the animal service center fund to be used for renovations and expansion of the animal center building. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen, members of council, in 2011, the cities of Stanton and Waynesboro and the county of Augusta entered into an agreement to jointly operate an animal shelter. Previously, the localities had purchased that service from the regional SPCA. The localities initially leased a property at 1101 Mount Tory Road in Lynnhurst, Virginia, and subsequently purchased the property. Owners eventually determined that renovation expansion of the facility were advisable to meet service demands and comply with applicable sheltering and care regulations. In 2014, the localities developed a project to expand the facility to provide additional storage capacity, dog kennel space to allow for better segregation of ill or unruly animals. Renovations were applied to improve customer service areas, cat areas, visitation and medical areas. In addition, the renovation contemplated general site and facility improvements. Operating and capital expenses for the facility are allocated according to the percentages of animals served by locality. And the percentages presently for operating and capital purposes are Waynesboro 17.2%, Stanton 21.5%, and Augusta County 61.3%. In 2014, council was presented with initial project estimate of $420,000. And at that time, the council appropriated $54,000 anticipating that any remaining required contribution would be appropriated upon the project's completion. Because the initially appropriated $54,000 was not contributed in fiscal year 2014 or subsequently, it is reverted back to fund balance and city council is asked to appropriate $65,754 this evening, which reflects essentially in a reappropriation of the original $54,000 and an additional contribution of $11,754, making Waynesboro's total contribution, the aforementioned $65,754. If you have any questions, I'm happy to respond to them.
Any questions?
Okay.
Is our motion to introduce.
Send them.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 8 is to receive information concerning the South River Watershed Plan and consider recommended action to delete five outstanding projects from the plan. Mr. Hamp?
So for some number of decades, approximately six, the Natural Resource Conservation Service has partnered with Headwater Soil and Water Conservation District in member jurisdictions, including Waynesboro, Stanton and Augusta County, to construct and subsequently rehabilitate flood control dams benefiting Waynesboro and Augusta County. Between 1954 and 1980, some 13 structures were constructed in the South River Watershed. Initially, 18 projects were conceptualized and the remaining five projects that have not been undertaken for a variety of reasons, including the inability to acquire necessary land rights, impacts of interstates or utilities, and unfavorable geology. The five projects remain on the project list but in an inactive status or a status designation according to the Natural Resource Conservation Service. Waynesboro and Augusta County have been contacted by the NRCS as to whether the remaining five projects should be removed from the project list entirely. Deleting these projects will have no adverse impact on future projects. If Augusta County and Waynesboro agree that no further progress can be made on the full implementation of the South River Watershed Plan, then NRCS will furnish an agreement deleting from the plan the projects that have not been undertaken, prepare a completion report including total installation costs for submission to the federal government in Washington DC, and change the project status to installation complete. It's my recommendation to council that we agree with the NRCS suggestion that the five outstanding projects should be deleted and NRCS should be authorized to take the, to begin the administrative steps to close out the South River Watershed Project.
Thank you. Is there any questions, Mr. Hamp? If not, is there a motion to authorize the city manager to communicate to the NRCS that Waynesboro agrees that the remaining five projects can be deleted from the plan and that NRCS may begin the process of closing out the project?
Send them.
Thank you, Mr. Marks is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Number nine is communications, correspondence and calendar.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Thank you. Number 10 is citizens' comment period.
No one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Send them.
Thank you, we are adjourned.